Today, since it's a, oh, we still have five minutes? Alright, just to, to give you guys an overhead before we start the meeting. Uh, so you understand, since we don't have a chair or vice chair. When six thirty be, uh, hits and it's time for us to start the meeting, I'll, I'll go ahead and kind of start us through the pledge and, and the approval of minutes. Uh, and then, um, you'll have to make the move, right? And then, uh, I'll ask you to nominate a chair and a vice chair. And that's how we'll begin the meeting, then. Once the chair, vice chair is selected, then that chair, vice chair will, uh, chair and vice chair. We'll, uh, continue with the meeting. We'll be, uh, starting shortly. One minute, one minute. One minute. Okay, we're about to, uh, begin, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence. Alright, you can take your seats. Before we begin to, actually, I'm gonna move. Yes, so before we do the, the approval of minutes, since there's no chair or vice chair, I, I'm going to, uh, suggest that we move for the election of a chair and vice chair. Uh, for this portion, anyone that wants to make a nomination can do so now, for the election of a chair.
I'd like to nominate J C Fernandez for chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam Chair. Madam Clerk.
Board Member, um, Julia.
Yes.
Board Member, Leoncio.
Yes.
Board Member, Sandra.
Yes.
Board Member, De La Sierra.
Yes.
Board Member, Fernandez.
Yes.
The motion passes.
And Chair, I also, since, uh, we should have probably taken roll. But given that these, all these folks have given their, uh, high votes, I'd like to, uh, show that there's quorum.
Board Member, um, Leoncio. This is for roll call.
Roll. Here.
Board Member, Sandra.
Here.
Board Member, Julia.
Here.
Board Member, De La Sierra.
Here.
And now Chairperson Fernandez.
Here.
Mister Chair, I think the next item would be to elect a vice chair. And I hand the floor to you.
Thank you, uh, anybody would like to elect, uh, a vice chair? Make a motion, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion for Fred Sandra to be the vice chair.
I'll second.
I've been there before, I've been there before. Should, should be Leoncio.
Alright, I'm gonna call roll call, Board Member, Leoncio.
Yes.
Board Member, Julia.
Yes.
Board Member, De La Sierra.
Yes.
Board Member, Sandra.
I guess, yes.
Chairperson Fernandez.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Alright. Okay, um, so we're gonna go now to, uh, before, before we get to public comments, I just wanted to, uh, to recognize two, two former board members that are no longer serving with us, and I, I wanted just to mention that they, uh, both Lynn Matos and, uh, board, board member Chair, uh, former Chair, Miriam Yanis, served with integrity and with professionalism, and we're gonna miss them on this board. So, just wanted to mention that. Uh, now for public comments, anybody in the audience had, wanted to stand up and speak on?
Before public comments, we do have approval of minutes on the agenda.
Oh, that's right, okay.
We skipped over.
They did.
Excuse me, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes, there's one scribe's mistake, but it's not a big one. It's got a tie on it, toe line, is what they have written down, but other than what?
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The, the minutes are going to the record. Now, um, now we're ready for public comments, anybody in the audience wanna stand up and speak on behalf of any item?
If you do wish to speak for public comments, you do have three minutes. And you just stand up in the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you can go ahead and speak. I also have nobody on Zoom right now.
Nobody else. So I'm assuming that everybody here is gonna speak on behalf of their item, right? Okay, okay, alright, so, we'll move on. Uh, our attorney will now speak on the quasi judicial.
Yes, um, before we do that, I think it would be proper, uh, for us to, uh, go ahead and have Victor's wire one in.
I, I'd like to make a mo, I'm, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I, I wanna ask that we move, uh, the items in the order in which, uh, in which are now presented. So, to move the applicant, uh, Lubin first, and then Lake Patricia Holding second. Can I get a, a second?
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose. Motion passes.
Okay, um, the other thing I think at this time would be for, uh, the for to swear, anyone that's gonna be giving testimony?
Mm-hmm, if you're gonna be speaking on any of the items that are gonna come before you now, please rise and raise your right hand. Do you swear to say the truth and only the truth, so help you God? You may be seated.
Okay, so, uh, board, please note, uh, the following items, uh, which I'm going to read both of them. V A R H twenty twenty four zero zero two nine, uh, which will be followed by V A R H twenty twenty four zero two two, are both, uh, quasi judicial in nature. An opportunity, uh, for persons to speak on each item will be made after the applicant and the staff have made their presentation on each item. All testimony, including public testimony and evidence, will be made under oath of affirmation, as, uh, properly taken. Uh, additionally, each person who gives testimony may be subject to cross-examination. If you do not wish to be either cross-examined or sworn, your testimony will be given its due way. The general public will not be permitted to cross-examine witness, um, but but the public may request the board to ask questions of staff and witnesses on their behalf. Persons representing organizations must present evidence of their authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Any person presenting documents to the board should provide the town clerk with a minimum of ten copies. For the details of quasi judicial, may be obtained from the clerk. Uh, and with that, the first matter, um, I believe, and I think I called it, no, I called it right, would be V A R H twenty twenty four zero two two nine, uh, the applicant is Mister Victor Lubin. And on behalf of the town, we will have, uh, Ms. Olivia Shock will be making the presentation.
Hi, everyone, um, so this is a variance, there are five, I'm not gonna read them all, uh, in specific, as you guys know. Uh, but this is a variance seeking to make a pergola, um, legal on this property that is, uh, violating the rules you see below. Um, this is on a, about a nine thousand square foot, um, residential lot in a, a low-density residential neighborhood. This was, there is a zoning violation in association with this property that is for the pergola that is, you're, they're seeking the variance for. Um, at this time, the staff recommends denial for this variance due to the variance does not comply with any of the items except for on item, um, D, variances one, three, four, and five comply that, uh, it can be approved without causing substantial detriment to the adjoining properties, but variance two does not comply in that aspect. Um, other than that, they do not comply with any of the other items.
And do the board members have any questions for?
Uh, was there a permit pulled for this work at all?
There was not, um, as far as I know, the applicant can speak more on the situation that they had that devolved from there, but there was not a permit pulled for this pergola.
There was no permits pulled.
No.
And it is, uh, presently, it's already been constructed, it's?
The pergola is existing on the, on the property.
Um, with the chair. Is the pergola though, um, with a canopy cover or a, what kind of? Cause it, it seemed on the plans that it said something about proposed canopy and proposed tile over concrete, so I'm, I'm assuming?
I believe that was just, cause it says proposed, just because the, that was prior to the pergola being constructed, but I believe it's just a, uh,
A regular wood?
Wood slat top, it's not wood, but that style.
And the floor covering, we don't know if that's, uh, brick paper, like over sand or actual concrete?
He can speak to the exact materials, and I know he does have, um, he did say that he went and got, he has like, uh, construction plans for, he's, he's planning on seeking a permit after this. He does have construction plans that has all of the documented materials and things like that, but I believe it's on a concrete pad.
It isn't a concrete.
I believe so, I would have to double check the, I don't have the plan in front of me, but I believe it is.
So he would, through the chair, so he would know where these foundations were put in or not?
He does, he did get, uh, he does have the plans for where they are, but, yes.
I'm looking at the plans.
Okay.
Now, the, the other question that I always, that I had when I would look at a survey, it looks like there's a ten-foot utility easement that this would be encroaching on.
I believe so. Yes.
Typically speaking, wouldn't you have to get some kind of approval by, uh, somebody to approach on a utility easement, or you could just build on top of it and?
So in order to get over the easement issue, if the board sees uh, to grant the variances that are in front, because obviously that's the first obstacle. Um, whenever there's work on top of an, um, easement, we usually request of, that would be his next, next obstacle, right? He would have to go to, uh, all the utilities that could possibly wish to use that easement. The, depending on what type of easement it is, so if it's a, uh, um, so which utility, he would have to go to WASA, if it's an utility easement, then he would have to go to FPNL, the cable companies, and bring letters from all the possible utilities that may want to utilize the easement, saying that they don't plan to do so in the future, and also that they would be able to go in there, should they need to, right? Cause we're not removing that easement. But that would be like the next step, if?
So, through the chair, so if they had a, uh, reason to go through there and they removed the pergola, the land owner would be responsible for, to replace it, not?
Put it back, yes.
Utilities.
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions, or staff? Seeing there are none, thank you, thank you very much. Uh, Dr. Lubin, would you like to?
Uh, before you do that, I think we need to, do you, I, I think we have some public comment on this issue, is that?
Sure.
Is this the issue you guys were coming in to speak of? Yes? Is this the item you guys wanted to speak about? Okay, so you're, you're coming to just listen in on the process, correct, okay.
Okay, please stand up, yeah, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening, my name is Doctor Victor Lubin. I recently bought a house at eighty-five twenty-one Southwest one hundred and sixty-second Street. Uh, back in November, I bought the house, and, uh, beautiful neighborhood, everything was fine with the, with the house, but I wanted to get a pergola. And I actually contacted one of my friends, who gave me the phone number of a contractor, that, uh, went into the house, measured the whole thing, and, uh, told me that he could do the pergola. Uh, my mistake was not asking anything about permits or anything like that. Um, which I had never been in the situation of neither getting permits, or this is my first house. So pretty much, he went on, he did it, um, based on what he was telling me, he was doing it within the limits of the house, that's what I was told. Uh, I would say like three weeks after the pergola was done, um, I got a letter from, certified letter from, from you guys, from the town of Miami Lakes, stating that I had a, um, irregularity, which I have to go in, come in. I spoke to Susanna about it, and that's when I realized that definitely I needed a permit to get all this done. But at that point, the pergola was already done, so what I'm trying to do is get the, the, get into the rules or regulations of what I'm doing, trying to get a permit, trying to legalize the perg, the pergola. Um, the, the way that it's supposed to be, which I didn't know, and it was my mistake for not asking a little bit more, or going into the town and asking what is it that I needed to get done. But the pergola is done already, so that was my mistake. So now I'm trying to go over the variances that I went with Susanna, of everything that has been not within the normal limits of the pergola, to see if we can get it legalized. I actually spoke to my neighbors, the three houses that I have, four houses that I have around it, that have a problem. I left a paper that they signed, I did a small little paper, saying that they, if they were okay with the pergola, and this and that. And they didn't have any problems with it. They, uh, they signed it, I left it, it was my mistake, but I went above and beyond, and I did, I actually contacted another contractor, because the one that did the pergola for me doesn't pick up the phone, is MIA. Once again, I learned from this mistake that I have to go over and see which contractor I actually get for whatever work I'm doing at home. But I actually got another contractor, one of my offices that I'm actually doing, uh, right now. Um, and he went in, he did the structural plan, he's doing the engineering plan, and something about hurricane permit or something that I'm gonna need if I go above and beyond with a permit. And everything with it is according to him within normal limits, except the variances that I have to go over with you guys. So that's where I am right now, trying to get a permit, trying to get it legalized, trying to do the right thing.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question, so, in one of the details, it shows, uh, like an aluminum style roof, but then on the other thing, it says canopy, what, what kind of a roof do you have opposing to do?
According to what, uh, I was saw by the new contractors, or the one known contractor, it's an aluminum, uh, roof, uh, that is set for, uh, to get, to be legalized permit. So it's an aluminum, uh, structure in all words, and it has an aluminum roof.
Okay, so it's not really, cause to me a canopy is something different than that, but it could just be me.
Through the chair, I'd like to ask a couple of questions, did, did you have any plans whatsoever when this was originally built?
No, nothing.
Did you take any pictures of the work that was?
I did, took pictures of the work, and when they were doing the, I have a picture when they were doing the, like, the, the post, they put it, they did put it in concrete, cause I saw it, it was at least two or three feet well, underneath the ground, in concrete, that, that, that I saw, and I have pictures of that. I saw pictures of when they were doing it, and the material that we're using. And I actually got, uh, one of the papers, uh, they stripped out of the box or whatever, which I found it, I have it, I have that too.
Did you, uh, ask the, uh, I was saying installer, because the obvious is wasn't a contractor. Uh, the installer, have he had a license, insurance, did he show you any of those things?
Not at all, I did not ask for any of that, and now I'm trying to contact him, they're in my, they're not answering the phone. I don't know where they are, I'm trying to get, to see what type of material they use, and that's where I got the new contractor, trying to help me with all of this.
So it was built without any plans or anything whatsoever?
They didn't show me none, none of that.
Nothing, nothing at all?
No.
Yeah, well.
They did it.
That's a good one.
I have a, a comment with the application on the, the, uh, the distance from the, from the main house to the structural column is four foot seven. Um, our code requires a ten-foot separation between the main house and the, uh, the auxiliary stru, uh, structure. And you're over five foot, five foot short. Um, you're, you're almost touching the main house with, with, with the pergola. And, and, uh, that's very intrusive.
I, I think, um, actually, for the record, I think there's five different variances that we're to review, so aside from the distance, there's other things that we are also considering. So I just wanted to be clear on that, that there's five variances, am I, am I right about that, there's five variances that were?
There would have? Yes, yes, there's five variances. And I think they'll have to do with the, with the, the size, so from the, from the outside to within and all of that, yeah. And one of them being what, what, uh, the gentleman was like saying.
I don't know if I could ask back to staff, though, how is the whole thing with the water, you know, um, retention area or green area, that? Is there a variance required there too for this structure? Cause from the survey, it looked like there was a lot more green area before, in the back.
Right, so technically, uh, this entire area should have been green, because this is the side face in the street for which there is usually a fifteen-foot setback for even, um, uh, right, for even, even for decking, right? So this is where, right, does he need an additional variance for that? Not necessarily, because the, there is additional green areas elsewhere, and the swimming pool usually retains enough water to compensate for the square footage, but but yeah.
To the, to the applicant, you, you also understand the issue of you, you're encroaching on an existing easement, utility easement?
I, I didn't know that until you just mentioned it here today. If you guys are talking about, um, like an FPL, that's what you guys are saying, the, based on what I see on the structure, there's one on, on the corner of it. If you guys are talking about um like an FPL, that's what you guys are saying, the based on what I see on the structure, there's one on on the corner of it. Uh I will say. Foot foot and a half away from the structure, cause I see it. That's the only easement. That's what you guys are calling it, that I see.
That would be the actual box, but the easement would refer to all of all of the. The land, if I should call it, or.
That is going underneath.
The surfaces of where they are considering easement, so it's much larger than just what you're seeing.
I that I I really didn't know until now.
So you understand sewer, water, telephone, cable, gas. All of those services run, have the right to run through that area.
Yeah. And I understand what you guys are saying, that I will have to in that case go to each one of those people. And ask them for whatever I need to see if they need the complete access to it or. If uh if any in the near future they need to get access into it, then that will be something that I I have to deal with.
I mean, my experience with that is at the end of the day, even if they were to allow you to do that. You're gonna have to sign a paper that if they ever need to break that, they don't have to replace it. So there goes your pergola if they ever have to do anything there. I think.
Yes.
Right?
That would be correct, yeah.
I will take the responsibility when it comes to.
You got so many.
And and uh back, excuse me, back to um staff. So this is an all or nothing, if I if I understand it, right? In other words, we're really, there's no sense in us approving. Two or three or any of them other than all of them or or none of them.
Correct. Um if any one of these variances does not get approved, he can no longer have the pergola that is there right now, cause it's. In effect, legalizing it.
Right, cause in this case, it's already been built. It's not like we're trying to reconfigure it to make it work.
As through the chair again, uh doctor, I think that you probably would be best to start over and meet the code. You know, whoever draws this up for you, start it over and do the correct correct kind of drawing. And come in and maybe give one variance for what you wanna do, because there's just way too many things that. We're done incorrect here. My I I'm just suggesting that approving this is gonna be very difficult. And that if you come up with a different plan to what's drawn here now. Uh only requiring maybe one or two variances, it would be a lot easier, I feel, for the board. To try to help you. But you have so many that if we try to take one away, really we need to take them all. I don't know. I'm I'm trying to be helpful and trying to. Yeah, you you can't have as big a pergola by code as you have there. You can come in and request for variance less than what you have here. And uh we would either have to reject them all or approve them all. And and the position is I don't feel like it approval. So what I'm saying to you is maybe, I don't know Suzanne through. Yes, sir. Do a smaller pergola that would require less. Yes, less variances that 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 we could help you at least have a pergola there because. You really can't have a pergola with what I see. If we take the ten feet away from the house and we take the fifteen feet from the side. And then we take the back four feet. We can't approve any of it. So if you come in and ask for part of it, for the smaller pergola. We could do it. I I know you have it up and it's it's sad that you got caught in that position. It happens to a lot of people, you know, and it's there's a lot of bad contractors, also called contractor, I'm a contractor. So-called contractors that there that are not licensed, you know. Yeah, I'm a licensed contractor insured, it's very expensive to be one, but uh there's a lot of them that are out there operating. And hurting the community.
And and whatever configuration, you always have, you also have that utility easement that. Like everybody could do whatever they want. My suggestion is to be very careful with those utility easements, cause even if you get technically approval to go. Basically, there's five feet there that. At any given moment, they could just, they need to replace a line and there goes your whole structure, because what are you gonna do?
So so keep, right, keep that in mind, so if.
Excuse me, may I turn the microphone back on? Yeah, thank you.
I think the ten feet that you were telling me and the utility easement, those are those are two. That I will definitely try to try to compensate.
Exactly.
You you could get closer to the house and we could work with you, but the utilities would hurt you. They would take it down and you'd have to put it back up. And the rear easement, we can work with you, but you know.
Alright.
I don't know if you wanna withdraw it or if you wanna.
Um Suzanne.
All right, we, the other option would be if we wanna like entertain a motion to like table it. So he can go back, because if not, he may have to pay fees and everything to come back here.
No, we could waive.
I mean, the issue is, it's 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 already an application that is before you.
Yes.
Um he could ask for at this point like a continuance.
Can we, yeah, table it?
You but table it for for what? For him to come back?
For him to come back with a smaller.
But but we're gonna have to deny this and I, and excuse me for interrupting you, but I think I understand where, and I was thinking the same thing, that we would either have to approve it or deny. I think the 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 spirit is denying it now, but allowing him to come and maybe we can, we can. I don't know if we have an authority to waive the fee, so he wouldn't have to pay again for a variance, but we would be happy to hear him again and ask for those variants at a later time.
What would the variance be? By asking him to remove a pergola that it's it's already existing, he's gonna have to come back with a smaller structure.
Right.
He may not need a variance at all.
Hopefully, he would come back with a pergola that meets code.
Well, that would be ideal, but I think that board member de la Sierra would would was open to. Hearing one or two variances before it's being, before it's built, right? And then we we can chew on that. And I think that what his point was that we be we'd be open to hearing a variance or two. But the way it's set for right now, it's 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 unpalatable.
I I I I think that he, for his sake and for your sake as a board. Um to give clear direction as to what are the items that are not palatable and which are the items that may be palatable. Make that decision and then you can ask him to come back with those corrections in the future. And that that might be a little bit clearer and also set forth for anybody that's, you know, listening or watching, the direction this board would would be willing to go.
I agree with that.
I guess I'll say, but my point of view would be uh the rear setback and the uh area. Where the.
Mr. De La Sierra, if you can please speak into the mic, so.
Okay.
It's all recorded.
Thank you.
I would say the rear setback and the utility setback would be the ones that that are uh the most difficult to approve.
So my suggestion to that would be um so that he can utilize the same materials. That you would grant the size and maybe the distance from the from the main structure. So that he can then sort of relocate the structure to the proper setbacks. Cause I'm looking at the survey here like quickly and I think you could fit it. Next to the like getting it closer to the pool.
Closer to the pool, yeah.
Yeah.
How far are you away from the pool right now?
Say, I will say ten feet.
Ten feet?
I think so.
So if you went five feet closer to the pool.
I can do five feet closer to a pool, that will take me out of a a out of the, uh maybe that might take me out of the utility easement.
Yeah, it'll take you out of the easement.
Yep, but I can do that.
I think we would, they would still need a five-foot uh setback.
So they would still have the problem with the.
Because he's on the corner, so the corner there requires additional.
Being close to the resident, the residents, I'm not as opposed to.
Right.
Under the rear.
Yeah, so allow five feet there and then.
He would still have to cut the with the 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 length of it. And technically, the closest that we have ever approved one to the main structure has been six feet. So that's a stretch as well.
Would would you be open, Dr. Lubin, would you be open to to making the structure a little bit smaller?
Yeah, sure, of course.
Okay.
So we have that on.
I think if I if I make it smaller, I can take it out of the house, closer to the house. And I can take it out of the uh side uh street or the utility easement, I think sits.
Exactly.
And I can move it closer to the pool. If I move it closer to the pool, then I can, I will take already care of the side. If I make it a little bit smaller, I can take care of the house and that will be already two variances. Um what would be the other variant?
If you.
The back.
If you if you took care of the back one, say, the back barriers to get to five feet. And you moved over, so you gave the utilities the area to go by. Myself, I don't know how the rest of the board members feel, myself, I wouldn't be opposed to you being that close to the residence.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright.
And and I agree with you, board member, yeah, I agree with you.
So I don't know, Mr. Leoncio, how do you feel about that?
I I yeah, I think if he if he moves the uh the pergola closer to the pool, I wouldn't get any closer than five feet. Um I would I would stay away from the easements, definitely. And and I think that you that that you will, you will, you will be able to get a a pergola about um. Ten by twelve.
Nice size pergola, yeah.
Yeah, or. And 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 there you 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 will. You will satisfy, you know, most of the requirements.
Okay, can we make a motion like that?
Like what exactly?
Uh a motion saying that if he would move the the direction, if he would move the pergola. The five feet off the easement uh towards the east. And reduce the north end, this is the uh part that's in the setback for the rear.
Mm-hmm.
Remove the setback, take them back to the setback, leave it as it is from the home, from the residence, just relocate it over. Could a motion be made like that?
Sure, you're asking him to to bring into conformity. Uh we do that all the time with other structures. So I think that would be consistent with previous rulings that you've made as a board.
Move it away from the main residence.
Uh you wouldn't let it.
Right, right now, he's a four foot seven.
Leave it where it is with the main residence, because it's it's his house and he's. Four foot seven from the house, it's better than, because about a, I was saying like.
So we're granting that variance, in other words, we're granting the distance from the house.
Right.
The distance from the house we grant and just move it towards the east so that he clears the uh.
The easement.
The easement for the for electric and for all the services and the back.
So, so pretty, wow, what I'm thinking is that maybe if we look at the each different request. So the first one is the one of the total square footage. I have no idea what you're gonna end up with. You're asking for a five hundred and forty versus three hundred and fifty. I don't know what the square footage would be. But maybe one of the things that we could do is we just go literally one 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 through five. I'm thinking that the structure is gonna have to be, it's not gonna be able to be five hundred and forty feet. So I would probably be inclined to say maybe that first variance may not be acceptable. The second one is has to do with the rear setback where we want, I think. That would we would want the five feet because it's somebody else's, you're encroaching to an extent on someone else's house. So we would technically, or I would be inclined to deny that one. The third one is the side 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 street setback. Um that's the one where you have the utility easement. Uh right now, you you're asking for, let's say roughly five feet from it, your utility easement is ten feet. So what I would. Entertain something to the effect, or I would, you know, suggest that we say something to the effect of allowing. A ten-foot setback where fifteen is required and that'll get you out of the utility easement and move five feet towards the pool, that you could just literally move the structure. The fourth item has to do with the separation between his pergola and the existing house. We could either, you know, it's your home. You're okay with that being close, that's up to you. The last item is the one that I'm a little bit confused, the deck. Uh the existing deck now uh. Cause it almost looks like the pool deck.
That's it. Right, cause they poured concrete underneath the pergola and it's two feet out of the property line.
Oh, but the existing pool deck is the one that it. Cause the pool was there when you bought the house, yeah, yeah.
It's the portion of the deck that is underneath the pergola that is two feet out of the property line.
But but if we if we make arrangements for the smaller pergola that we're suggesting, we would probably conform to that, right?
So you would wanna push that out as well, but remember that that and and there's uh that's supposed to be, yeah.
So if we if we approved the fifteen by twenty-three pergola, he would be a three forty-five.
So it would be below the three fifty. So you wouldn't even, you need a variance there.
Fifteen by twenty-three, fifteen by twenty-two, he would then be off from the rear property line. He would then be away from the. On the utilities, he would only be the four feet basically away from the residence. In his own property, of course, to have to break up the concrete and get rid of that concrete and re pour and do everything again. But at least he would be able to have a pergola.
I mean, I guess at some point we have to close public comment before we can make motions. So we're just trying to work.
Thank you all for giving me all these uh ideas, which helps me to get it legalized, so. I'm trying to figure out also, but fifteen by twenty-three, like you were saying, or fifteen by twenty-two.
Fifteen by twenty-two.
It would take me out of the rear, it would take me out of the side. I will can move closer to the pool.
Right.
And literally will take care of almost all the variants except for the one closer to the house.
We'll grant that.
The one close to the house, we we can allow that.
Alright.
It would then be basically complying with most of the variants.
Alright.
What I would suggest is if that's the direction that the board wants to go and you ask enough sufficient questions to the applicant is that you close.
Yeah.
And then you debate that and with the motion.
Before I close, does anybody have any more questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, thank you. You may be seated, thank you. So do you wanna make a motion, Mo? I mean, you you have it on the table.
I was just trying to be helpful.
No.
And I wanna make sure that everybody on the board was, you know, okay with it.
I I think.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah.
Uh I make the motion that uh we have the applicant.
So De La Sierra, if you could speak clearly into the mic.
I'm sorry.
Particularly with this motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion that we allow him to move the pergola five feet to the east. Maintain the distance away from the home, reduce it to fifteen by twenty-two so that he can meet the rear setback. And meet the uh utility setback through the property. He'll have to reconstruct it, but at least he'll be able at this point have the ability to to build it.
And and he's gonna be away from the easement.
He's gonna be away from the easement.
Right, I I will second that motion.
Need further discussion?
Anybody wanna discuss it? Any questions?
No, no.
I'll call the roll. Board member Leoncio.
Yes.
Board member Julia.
Yes.
Board member de la Sierra.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Senra.
Yes.
Chairperson Fernandez.
Yes.
The motion passes.
So the staff, staff has all the notes, right? And we can, thank you, alright. Thank you. Have a good evening. Alright, we're on to the next item, which is Lake Patricia, the applicant is under a corporation name.
I think it's Lake Patricia Holden.
Lake Patricia Holden, yeah, V A R, age two thousand twenty-four dash zero zero two two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So for this. Thank you, Mr. Chair, so for this item, it's also a quasi judicial public hearings, uh, so the same, uh. The same disclosure that I provided the last time applies, and for this one, I will have, uh, Mr. Victoria. Olivia Shaq, provide the, uh, the talent presentation.
All good, close enough, um. So yes, this is, this applicant is seeking, um, two variances to allow their, uh, pool and deck to encroach nine foot, nine feet waterward on, over the top of slope. So this, um, home is under construction currently, um. And it's in, it's on a twenty-five thousand square foot lot, it's slightly irregularly shaped, angled towards the lake, um. And there was a single family home that was constructed in nineteen sixty-two, that's again currently undergoing extensive renovations, hence why they're applying for this pool now. Um, so according to the, oh, sorry, one second, I stapled my pages wrong. Threw off my. Anyway, sorry, uh, we're recommending in favor of this variance as they comply with all of the set, uh, variance criteria, except for criteria A of getting the letters from their neighbors. So at this time, um, again, they, they comply with all of the criteria except for A, so we recommend in favor of this, yes.
Thank you, thank you very much, um, I, I do wanna make something known, uh, I don't know if it's important for me to, to state this, but I did represent the seller. On this property, not the gentleman who owns the property, but I represented the seller as a real estate, as part of my trade, so I just wanted to state that for the record, that's okay.
Thank you for your, uh, being candid and transparent, that doesn't seem to be a, uh, a conflict, you're okay.
I have a question. Um. The way that it's worded, it says a variance to allow a swimming pool and a deck to encroach, but in the narrative, it almost seems like the deck. Does fall within the criteria?
Yes, the deck is okay.
So I don't need to, so we would. I guess that the part and the deck is just.
Correct, it's just.
Okay.
Yeah, it slipped in there.
Okay.
Usually, usually the deck is a problem, but when I went through the staff report, I realized the deck wasn't a problem, so.
Yeah, I have questions, and my question would be, I don't see any dimensions of the size of the pool. Or how far away from the residence it is, I see dimensions for. Looks like a barbecue area. There, but there's no dimensions as far away as this, how far the pool is from the, from the million, they didn't submit that to you when they submitted these plans?
No, oh, sorry, no, I was pulling up my, uh, I just had the staff report printed, I had to pull. This up, no, the plan that is attached on here is what we were submitted with at the time, um.
Without any dimensions or anything?
No, there are the, there's the larger dimensions on. The like sides of the property, but the, that specific area is not dimensioned out individually.
No, my question is what they're asking for, is my question is, there's no dimensions.
No.
Showing and where they want the variance, what, what it is.
No, for that, at, there is not dimensions on the.
On the plans or something.
But the, let's see, let me.
Yeah, I don't see any dimensions from the residence to the pool, or from the, uh, barbecue area to the pool, or the size of the pool in either direction. But we can ask the applicant when he's, when he's speaking at the time. Well, when he gets up there, when he gets up there, we'll ask him, I guess, it, it wasn't submitted, my question.
Yeah, no, it was, sorry, those, these are the only plans we have, the, it was not submitted, no.
Alright, thank you.
Anybody else have questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you, thank you. Alright, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Fernando Hernandez, I'm at sixty-three forty-eight Lake Patricia Drive, and I'm asking for a variance for the pool. The pool dimensions are on the actual pool drawings, cause the pool drawings are by a separate contractor, they submit their shop drawings for the pool. And the pool length is thirty-nine feet le- long by twenty-three foot towards the water, and it sits ten foot off the house. And nine and a half feet off the gazebo. On those two corners. I'm encroaching the tie, the tie line, the thing is that the house sits, it's like rotated from the way the tie line sits. So the far corner is like a pie-shaped corner encroaches past that line about nine foot. That's what, what we're requesting for, but I'm still thirty, forty, forty, thirty feet from the water line, I'm ways away from the neighbors. And I have the three letters from my right neighbor, left neighbor, and my backside neighbor approving the, the variance, I don't have any issues with that.
Could you, could you pass those letters to clerk?
I didn't see them, I didn't see any letters.
I have, I have them here.
Okay.
Uh, you have to submit ten of them, ten copies.
Oh, I didn't know, I was gonna wear that.
Sorry. And they have to be submitted ahead of time.
Oh.
I'm gonna, yeah, typically though, I, I think, well, we accept the letters for now as, as what he has.
I wouldn't be able to.
Everybody.
If you want him to present it as evidence and I can just show it all to you, that's fine, you, you can waive that rule. If you so wish, I would make a motion and then have it seconded.
I'll, I'll, I'll move to, uh, to accept the letters and have staff.
And for the benefit of the, Mr., uh, of, uh, board member Sierra, uh, let me explain that I have been counseling applicants to bring in the letters to the meeting. So that we don't have to put them on the agenda and make them, um, sort of. But as we did have an incident once where those letters were used to intimidate people that were.
Oh, really?
Yes, so I have made a little bit of an informal rule.
But I guess.
Uh, that we bring them to the meeting instead of, uh, producing them prior to the agenda, so that they, we don't compromise people's safety.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, give me all the favors.
Aye.
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 All opposed, no, okay.
Everybody voted in favor, no?
Yes.
You, you may continue, you may continue, I, I think that we interrupted you, but.
Pretty much, I, I don't know if, what else you guys need to know about the pool, pretty much, it's all straightforward, I don't think I'm. Trying to build a beautiful house in that area there, we're living in Miami Lakes for twenty years and I'm planning on going nowhere, I'm planning on retiring right there in that house. So. Yeah, four kids, I hope to enjoy the house with them.
The, the variance is only for the pool area and the deck, not the, I guess there's contemplated a structure, like a gazebo or something?
Gazebo's within, uh, the variance, the tolerance and the setbacks.
So the gazebo is not part of the, we don't, you don't need a variance for the gazebo?
Gazebo has an approval, has drawings, it's been built with inspections and everything.
Oh.
So, yeah, the gazebo gotta prove along with the house itself, and then when we brought in the pool permit with the deck, it's when it flagged zoning, cause of that corner that was over the, the tie line.
Okay.
The pool permit's pretty much fifty percent approved, except when it hit zoning, it stalled right there, so it's only approved, so I can get building final to order proven, and that should be the last of that.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, the only question I've had is, uh, you didn't submit the sizes of what we're supposed to approve, I don't. I don't see the size of the pool, the, the distance away.
We submitted was, uh, the, the size that was beyond.
No, I know, but. For us to be able to see that it wasn't submitted with this package, then you should have always, always submitted, and so that we know, so we don't have to guess, even though I can guess. You said how, what's the size of the pool?
It's twenty-three by thirty-nine. And it sits ten foot off the house. It's an infinity edge pool, and the deck doesn't go beyond the eighteen inches of the tolerance from the, the deck to the actual ground, up beyond the tie line.
So it's a big pool, it's a large lot, though.
Good size, it's almost a thousand square, nine hundred square feet pool. Have a lot of kids.
Yeah, uh, I won't say what I was thinking.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Okay, we're gonna now, we'll discuss it and.
Thank you.
Thank you, spare with us. I mean, we, I'll just. What I'm thinking, uh, we, we have approved stuff similar to this. Uh, recommendation from the, from staff is obviously something that's really important to me, so I'm. I'm leaning towards, uh, approving it, um, I would like to hear what other board members think, but. Uh, it is a large lot, I will say that extremely large lot.
Look, I.
Care.
What, what I would suggest is to put your own, sorry, proper posture is, before you, you continue with the discussion, make a motion one way or the other, and then move forward with your discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second too. Yeah, I have, uh, some reservations, the size of the pool, cause the basic question that I have, and I've been swimming in Lake Patricia since sixty-three. I've lived there since eighty-one on Lake Patricia, I walked by the house and I went by with my boat from behind to take a look at it. So it's a huge pool, and. I really. I don't, I don't see why it has to be such a huge pool and so far out, that you have to go past the tie line. It's not that big a distance, um. I have seen the water almost go, come up to the tie line of my house. Fill the, fill the lake all the way up to the tie line at my house, so that's the only.
Sir, please speak into the microphone, otherwise we can't do minutes later.
We have to, we have to open up, we'd have to open up the hearing again for him, so I make a motion to open it up.
I'll second.
The, the.
I'll in favor.
Aye.
Alright.
Yeah, so the thing is, I've been there since eighty-one, and depending on what time of year and which year it's been. I've had the water come within three feet of the tie line, I've had it come all the way up to the tie line, so that's my only concern, that it does. Go up, it does go up there.
I've seen it substantially, and I've been there for four years, and the farthest I've seen it go up is to the wall. On the bottom over there, and from the pool deck elevation to where, I've seen it the highest, me personally, I still got probably five feet. In elevation to get to where the pool decks would be at.
Yeah.
So I don't, I hear your concern, but.
Yeah.
I don't.
I mean, it's a huge pool, and.
It's a huge house, it's like, it's a huge house.
Oh, no, I, like, as I saw it, it's a two-story, is it four bedrooms?
Uh, four bedrooms, four bedrooms, five and a half bedrooms, a game room, living room.
No, it, it's, it's a very nice modern house, uh, I looked at it, you know, from the water and then from the front.
It's costing me a fortune. I'm costing a fortune right now.
In, in the plans that was submitted.
Bad time to build it.
No, no, I feel for you, I mean, you bought the house, you demoed the house, and.
I bought it a great time before COVID, and I started building it a bad time after COVID.
Yeah.
When all the materials are doubled, everything was doubled, I bought it a good price, but not a builder, it was like double to build.
Let me ask you a question, just that I, because what was submitted is this thing that's like green and has the, the thing, where is? Like the survey tie line there to begin with?
I have a drawing.
It's right there, you see it, dotted line. There's a dotted line, it runs.
But it says survey baseline?
Yes, that's it right there.
Oh, okay.
It says survey baseline, that's the tie line.
That's the tie line.
So in essence, the issue is, the nine feet is not really, it's basically towards the side almost more than anything else?
It's in the corner of the pool.
The corner, and then the.
The deck.
And then the corner of the bar, yeah, okay.
Correct, so the encroachment is really a diagonal, uh, or triangular portion into the tie line, so that, uh.
And then there's another one on the other side.
Which does not.
So now I get.
Another one on the other side, the, the barbecue area or the pergola area is built.
Right, but the, the portion on the other section doesn't count so much.
Doesn't count because it's within the.
It's within the square footage.
So basically.
Yeah.
No, because in my mind, I think, I thought we were nine feet onto.
No, no, no.
Back, and I'm gonna, doesn't make.
That one little pie, pie.
The little pie in the back.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, answer.
It isn't maybe, cause that corner actually is the infinity edge, the collector tank, so it goes beyond the eighteen inches.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
No, no, he brought it up.
Seeing none.
You know, say he hasn't seen the water come up that high.
I'd like to ask fellow board member de la Sierra. The concern about, because the gentleman says he's been there a few years, four years, but you clearly have been there much longer. Is your concern, would it, would it, the integrity of the pool is, it could be an issue if, if the water came up to, to the tie line?
Well, if he does the, the correct foundations and retaining wall, cause it's lower in that area. The ground is falling in that area, so he's gonna have to do some type of retaining wall there to hold the, to hold the pool. That would be the only thing to stop, to stop it at this point, the water would wash up. I mean, the longest I've seen the water sit there has been about four days, and then it recedes slowly.
And, and do we have any, any safe precautions for that with what he's applied with, with, with presently with the retainer wall?
So, uh, usually construction on shorelines, which this is a shoreline, has their own, um, building code requirements. So I'm sure the building department would make sure that all this is properly.
I see.
Buffered and stuff, um.
It's a large pool, probably the largest pool in the town of Miami Lakes. Nine hundred square feet.
That's a lot.
It's a big pool, yeah.
I know we're still gonna be using some of them.
Well, we have a motion, like.
Yeah.
Are you guys ready for?
Yeah, ready to vote.
To vote?
Ready.
Okay, let's call, please.
Board member Julia.
Yes.
Board member de la Sierra.
Yes.
Board member Leoncio.
Yes.
Vice chairperson Senra.
Yes.
Chairperson Fernandez.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Congratulations.
Enjoy your pool.
Enjoy it, have a good night.
I hope filling doesn't break you.
Filling it is an issue.
Yeah, the filling it is a.
Wow, okay, we were gonna, we'll move on now to the, uh. Where are we at, we, we have a, um, we're gonna be reviewing. This is an administrative part of the, the, the hearing?
Yes, this is a, um, part of your role as the, uh, planning and zoning board is to be the, uh, land development. Um, advisors.
Local planning authority, yes.
And as the O P A, uh, your requirement is to, to review any ordinances that affect the land development, um, I'm. Can I go, say what it's about, thank you, I, I don't wanna steal your thunder, because this is something that Susanna worked on a lot, but I can give you a very quick snippet of what it is, cause it's pretty simple. It used to be, and it has been, and still is for a lot of, uh, legal issues, uh, that the only way that you can publish is by a newspaper of general circulation. And that's still the way it is for a lot of things, but as technology has, uh, become more accessible. The law is starting to change and allow technology to be used as a means for publications. And this is the case with regards to a lot of the publications that cities have to, uh, put forth. In newspapers for public hearings, quasi judicial matters such as this one, uh, and so the way that the law works is simply this way. If the county passes an ordinance and the county adopts a, uh, provider, okay, a vendor. Uh, that publishes online, then a municipality of our size, no, it, it depends on the size of municipality, can kind of piggyback. On that, uh, on that county service, now. There's something else at play here, the Daily Business Review, which some of you may, may know very well. Uh, and was a paper that was used and, and subscribed to by many attorneys and many folks in the industry. uh, and was a paper that was used and, and subscribed to by many attorneys and many folks in the industry. Uh, and it's, it's really, the common person doesn't know about it, but those in the industry do, uh, published a lot of these legal, uh, advertisements. Unfortunately, they've decided to no longer publish print, and so they're only online. Uh, that hurts the town and it's, it's hurt a lot, a lot of people in the legal community because there's not a lot of newspapers around there. There's one small one called Community Newspapers that, uh, the county uses, the legal community uses, but they only advertise, I think, once a week, and it's kind of makes it very difficult and cumbersome. So a lot of municipalities are, uh, kind of lobbying the county, and the county is moving to adopt a, uh, website of which we will be able to piggyback now. In order to do that, and so I'll kind of explain this step by step, there's a couple things that we need to do, there's many things in our code that are not specific as to what types or what forms of advertisements, uh, need to be used, there's others though that are specific and require publication by newspaper. So what Susanna did, which, thank you, thank you, thank you. Is she went meticulously through our code and she found every instance where that appears. Many of them are in the land development code, and so what you have before you here is that work of art that Susanna did which shows all those areas in our code, uh, that have the word newspaper. And what you may, will see is that we've replaced that by, or by any other method provided by Florida laws, maybe amended from type to type. So allowing for newspapers and or anything else, so in a nutshell, that's what's before you.
It's affecting everything.
Just to remind you all that the only thing we're doing right now though is changing the code so that we may move on with the times. Uh, there is no alternative at this time because the cou- the county still hasn't figured out what they're gonna do, so right now we're still publishing effectively into a newspaper, both the ordinances, uh, both this ordinance and the two variances that you've seen today were published in the community newspaper, which, you know, just pushed their, that our deadlines like almost two weeks before, which makes it much more difficult for me to bring cases quickly before you. Um, it's also a little more expensive, it's just, it, it, it's just a lot more cumbersome for everybody involved. Um, we're just hoping that there will be other venues available soon enough, and we wanted to have our code ready that we can take advantage of whatever it is that either the county provides or the Florida statutes change their mind and come up with a new way or, uh, whatever is that, you know, the next version of maybe social media, I don't know, it, 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 you know, times are changing, we need to change with them, and this is the first step, right? To allow us to do so.
Uh, I'll move to accept the recommendation from town staff that, uh, that we move to the direction to, to make it less cumbersome for you to comply with the law.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second it also, I've fully read it and it affects everything. It affects, uh, hiring attorneys, hiring everybody in the, in the town, it's, it's cross-the-board affecting. And we are moving in that direction anyways, we're, everything's going on there.
Do, do I have a second?
Yeah, I have just, I could do a second.
Uh, de la Sierra's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no, motion passes. Thank you very much.
You did a great job, boss.
Thank you.
You did, I know, I read it, I read it three times to make sure I understood it.
She did, she did great. I appreciate her so much.
Even the janitor.
Thank you.
Can advertise for the janitors.
Uh, the meeting is adjourned.
Congratulations, Chair.
Congratulations.
Congratulations on, Mr. Sheriff.